Our heavenly Father, we thank you for another night in New Mexico. We ask that you help us do better as a community. Help the family that's burying an 11-year-old girl that committed suicide over being bullied. Help our police officers. We've lost five this year already. We've lost more than we've lost in Afghanistan, Syria, Iraq, every place else in the world put together. Help our state, Lord, and guide us in all that we say and do. And I ask this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. Alrighty then. We're gonna call this meeting over at 6:01 PM. Roll call.
Mayor Hicks.
President.
Councilor Reynolds here. Councilor Vasquez.
Here.
Councilor De Cero.
Here.
Councilor Paliya.
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You build the agenda?
I make a motion to go through the agendas presented.
Second.
First second.
Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Vasquez. Council De Cero?
Yes.
Council Paliya?
Yes.
Citizens to address the council. Barbara Wesley.
Mayor and councilman, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak regarding the Animal Care Center. I have a report for you. First though, I'd like to mention that we need three new board members. And it's my opinion that the new board members need to be wanting to be on a working board. And what that means is they will be able to assist the manager in ways that will meet the needs of the Animal Care Center. Currently, we do have one person like that on the board. Her name is Carolyn Newton. This lady fosters puppies for three to four weeks and prepares them for transport. Make sure that they are healthy and vaccinated. She helps load the transport vehicle and she fosters problem dogs that need socialization so that they can be adopted. Carolyn has also fostered kittens when a mother cat was not available, which means that she's required to feed those kittens bottled feed them numerous times a day and into the night. She fosters pups in need of nutrition or those that have been injured. She keeps all the vaccines up to date. And Carolyn has been active in fundraising too. And this is an amazing woman. We just need more like her. The Animal Care Center right now has a tremendous crew. One employee comes in at 5 o'clock in the morning to start cleaning. And Sheri has obtained cleaning products that have addressed the problem with the odor. And you can go in now and it just smells sweet and nice. It's just amazing what she's done with that problem. It also makes it nice for those visiting the shelter when they come in to see if their pet or cat or dog has been left there or picked up. And so it's nice for visitors to go in. Right now Cindy Reynolds is in the process of... She and Sheri are in the process of redrafting the ordinance for the Animal Care Center. And Cindy has also done a tremendous work for the Grants Community Pantry. I have suggested several times that we should probably be recognizing employees that do an outstanding job. And there have been two in the past month or so that have... And I'm not going to mention their names because we don't have a process here for recognizing those employees. But we should have a special way to recognize those that are going beyond their normal duties. And I won't embarrass them or bring their name to attention until we have a solution to recognizing employees. I also have the Grants Animal Care Center report for the month of January. They received a total...
We'll redo that later. The three minutes are up for you. And they were on the agenda to give a report. And they will be on the agenda. We're only taking one report at a time. Barbara, your three minutes are up. Thank you very much. But we'll hear that report next week when they come to give it. Okay? At our next meeting. Roseanne Boyet, an environmental tax?
Yes. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I'm a member of the Recycle Sibula group. And I understand that the city in 1991 adopted an environmental tax which is a very small percentage of the gross receipts tax. And is dedicated to specific uses. So I would like to suggest and urge the council to consider taking, using a small portion of that money and contracting with an outside consultant to do a feasibility study on curbside.
We've already done those studies, okay? We've already done those studies.
Excuse me.
We've done those studies.
Excuse me.
And we've...
My understanding is that three minutes means I need to...
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
So that's what I would like to suggest is that the council consider using some of that money. Thank you for your time.
Okay, we've already considered that, guys. And it comes out to about $16 a household. We've already done that study. And that's not gonna happen. That's not gonna happen. Okay. Jean Garcia Jacobs.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, it is on behalf of Jacobs and my best ability to present to you guys the Western Central Section President's Award for Most Improved Waste Water Facility in New Mexico. It is with great pleasure... It is with great pleasure and great honor for me and for Jacobs to present to you guys this award.
And Jean?
Yeah, come on up.
Jean is our head operator there at the new plant. And he has really been tasked with a big job to learn that new process and get everybody up to speed. So they've done a great job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's what $17 million means. And on your environmental tax, this is what we spend that tax on by the way, Roseanne. Just so you know, we've been spending that tax on the wastewater treatment plant for years. Okay, just so you know where that money goes. Thank you very much. Alrighty. Paulis Glitzer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers.
Good to see you. Welcome back.
Thank you. It's nice to be here. I have a very short request and that is the group, the community group Recycle Sibula, a group of volunteers that initiated the recycling program in Sibula County in 2010. So it's been nine years. We would like to address the council with a few items of interest, including some financial support for outreach and education. So we would like, we'd ask the mayor and the council to put us on the agenda in one meeting sometime in the near future if you can.
That's simple.
That would be great. Thank you. And then we'll take some time to give you some information.
On that note, we're looking at... And tonight is just for basically for discussion. We plan on kicking this off in about six months of getting rid of the plastic bags.
I see that on the agenda. We're thrilled.
You know, we just need some time to roll it out. We need to get some people on board.
Yes.
We need to get some cloth bags. Okay, so, and we're looking for help on that. As a matter of fact, I have... Where's she at? O'Shea? Should be reaching out to you guys in the very, very near future.
Great, because we'd be happy to help.
Okay, we've already reached out to Smiths, to Walmart. We're not looking at the restaurants, but we are looking at Walgreens. Everybody else think it's out of bag, okay? The restaurants, we're not really gonna worry about them right now. But we are looking at starting an ordinance and changing the ordinances to make this happen.
Excellent.
But we're gonna give us a few months to roll this out. But as far as that curbside stuff goes, guys, we're not ready for it here.
Okay.
And we've had this discussion, man, you have. Okay, we've had it plenty of times. We're too poor of a community to put a blue pin in front of everybody's house for $16. I mean, that would kill my mother. I would be ending up paying her garbage bills. Okay? And that's just not right.
Well, we'd like to have some time to...
As we move forward, you betcha.
Address you on that, but we would love it. Is it possible perhaps next month to get on the agenda?
Yes, we have two meetings next month. You'll either be on the first or the second.
Great.
We'll see where you're at because I canceled the animal care report. I canceled three reports tonight because I had so many on there.
Yeah.
And we're gonna give one report at a time. So that way we're not dragging out three or four hour meetings.
That's great. And please consider, we'd love to help you with the plastic bag ordinance.
We're counting on it.
Whatever we can do.
We're counting on it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay? Last one, Eileen Yarbo. Eileen Yarbo, sorry.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I would like to invite you and remind you about Sibula County Day at the Legislature this Thursday, February 7. We will be having exhibitors in the East and West Halls of History from 8:30 to 2:30. And we'll have memorials read in the House and Senate as well. So any of you elected officials that are staying over from the dinner, please let me know so we can get you in the roster. And you can be recognized on behalf of Sibula County Day. And so I just wanted to remind you, oh, also, we will be featuring the jazz bands of Grants High School and Laguna Atoma High School at the noon hour. And so stick around, come check it out, and come represent Sibula County. And then as you know, you, Mayor and council, are invited to the dinner, the appreciation dinner the evening before.
We'll see you Wednesday night and Thursday afternoon.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, I'll be there, man. I'll be there. I'm off. When I'm off, I show. Okay. On to public discussion of a charter. Anybody out there wanna tell us we're not in compliance with our charter? I'll tell you we're not in compliance with our charter. Approval of regular city council meeting from 1/7/2019. Anybody see any corrections? entertain a motion to approve those meetings?
I make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Vasquez? Council De Cero? Abstain? Council Paliya?
Yes.
Got it. Future Foundations Quarterly Report. Welcome back to town.
Thank you.
First of all.
Thank you.
I'm glad you came back.
Thank you.
Okay, so...
Thank you for having me.
So we have Julie Halafo here from Future Foundations to give you a quarterly report.
So I'm just gonna keep this short and sweet. I gave you, I provided you a list with everything. I just wanna point out a few of the things here. The after-school program, we have 200 students and we have 70 to 80 students attending daily. We also have the SWAG program coming up and we haven't gotten as much participants as we would like to see. So I'm thinking about maybe putting it out on the paper and hopefully getting more involvement with that. And then also, we are going to be attending the Sibula County Day as well at the legislative session. And if you guys have any questions for me, I mean, I'll leave you with that list. If you have any questions, just let me know.
I got a question for you.
Yes.
On January 30th, we had an early dismissal from school. Our futures was closed. Why was it closed that day? That was printed on the chief's... I love your little rolling thing there, chief. It's a great informative thing for our community. It's awesome, okay? Go ahead.
The only thing I could think of is the water being shut down that we weren't open. Because I know that there was one day that we had to close because we didn't have water in the area. And I all have to look back.
No, because that one there was out. It was out for three days in advance of the schools. When the schools were closing, that thing was rolling on his roller coaster across. Check on that seat.
I will.
And give me a call.
For sure.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Anybody else got any questions for her before she steps away? She's new to the gang. Have her on her. Welcome her to Grace Correct. Welcome her back correctly.
We're doing good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Last fire department. See, I was gonna ask you. But I figured you're pretty quick, so...
I can drag this off a couple of...
I know you're pretty quick. I was gonna move you next month, but I figured you were one of the first ones here, so...
I won't take that much time. Once a year for the...
Mayor and councilmembers, city manager, staff, and... Yeah, it's time. The fire chief, Robert Hayes. And once a year, I put all our stats together and hand them out and talk for a few minutes about them. So I'm just gonna bring up three things. This is, you know, quite a lengthy document. Talks about what we've done in 2018. To stand out to begin with, we had an 18% increase in call volume in 2018 over the previous year. And somebody was helping the transition from Mont Tater to Superior and other things were just busy. That's ours too. I'm sure the chief is just as busy as we were that year. You just never know. The next... Allergies are coming up, Mayor. Exactly, they are. It's terrible across the street. One thing that ISO requests us to do is train all the time. And along in this document, our training hours increased 216% over the previous year. So one thing I wanted to do for 2018 was have us do in-house training, training here in the city that we have also. And something's down to Socorro. It's free to every firefighter that's there. So we went from $1,100 to $2,400 worth of training for 2018. And the thing that stands out the best and I think is a great sentiment for our community is that we have a 50% decrease in structure fires in the city. And that's due to the council having some of these buildings torn down that are dilapidated and just falling apart. Other things with fire prevention that we've done for the past 30 odd some years, which I think has culminated. We had six fires totally free within the city and then three in Valhalla. And I think... No, all three were in Valhalla that we helped with. So we have 50% decrease in fires, which is a great thing to have, a great thing to do. And that's it. If you could look through this. It has a lot of photos, a lot of documentation. But what we've done every month, we turn that into as well. But it's a do forget for you to look at and have as a document to review. The list, of course, tells you everything that we do. Every fire reimbursement we go to. They found you. Uh-oh. I think I got caught.
I got caught with my phone.
Oh, your phone on the headline, mon, library.
Yes, I did.
Any questions that I might be able to answer? But prove this and give me a call. Be sure all of you have my cell number. I know the mayor does.
We have our fire department here, several of the...
Couple of them in the back hiding.
Always wanna thank them for their dedication and all the stuff that they do above and beyond in helping in our community.
And there's the list in there of what we have done. What we've done above and beyond just fighting fires, fire prevention. Come, go look at the kiosk. It's now at the library. Sergeant Mays instituted that for us last year. We've had it here. Had a utility now it's at the library with photos and renditions of things that we do during the year.
Cool.
Along with the rolling banner on Nimitz.
Got it, word. Questions? Cindy? Manny? Rick? Good job.
Chief? Well, thank you.
Thought you was back.
It's not just me. It's my guys too.
Thanks for supporting the chief. He wouldn't burn no dam without you guys, okay? Man, don't talk about that, guys.
Not them, but you. Just the guy with the...
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
We'll just jump into item number five on this.
You go, buddy.
Back in early 2018, got notice from the Fire Marshal's Office that the grant will be available again. They weren't the year before because the state legislature took every nickel from everybody in sight. So we were able to qualify for grant writing. And we were successful in getting a $99,000 grant with a 10% match. And with that, item five is fire hose. Three individual outfits, seven bids. And Curtis out of Arizona was a little bidder of $41,700. We test our fire hose every year. And last year, a lot of our hosts came up. Some came up damaged and didn't pass. And a lot of it still has their stencil date on it of 5 of 1989. So we've got some 30-year-old hoes. And I thought, you know what? I think we need to get some new hoes. So this is what this first one on the delegate here is for. I'm asking for your approval, and Curtis, for $41,700 for fire hose.
Is it better hoes?
It's always better hoes, Mayor. Of course. It's newer.
I mean, this hose, I know it's brand new, okay? What I'm questioning is, I'd rather pay a New Mexico company $43,000 than pay an Arizona company $41,000.
Unfortunately, Mayor, it's the same hose.
Well, I'd still rather pay New Mexico money than Arizona money. Unfortunately, I don't get to make that decision.
That's up to the council on what they wanna do.
Yes, it is.
I know Artisia, I know Curtis. I do not know who New Mexico Fire is. Just saying.
Council, questions for the council?
And I even got the 5%...
Yeah, I know you did.
And it didn't still, maybe it still didn't match. Did all of it, didn't match.
I appreciate it. I appreciate it. You know, we get the same thing with Curtis.
Exactly.
Okay, they just can't meet the bid with the state contractor.
Unfortunately, no.
And I understand that, but I mean, I don't get involved in it. Unless somehow this thing splits to a tie, and I don't see that happening. Questions for the council? Let's buy some fire hose. Which one are we gonna buy? Go ahead, Rick.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
What's... How long do these hoses last? And what's the recommended to replace?
It depends on the hose and how much you use it. We use our hose quite a bit, but we test it every year. We enroll every length and pump 200 pounds through it and make sure it doesn't leak.
Right. So how old is the current one?
Some of it's 30 years old.
30 years.
Yeah. That's a long time, isn't it? Eighty-four meters. I don't know who we got that. They may have been in business back then. They might have. And we have changed hoes because at one time we had Pacific Coast thread, which was, I have no idea why the past chiefs bought that. We now have national standard. So we can use our hose with any other fire department in the area. At one time, Pacific Coast was a thing and wasn't much anymore.
Any other questions? It's a pleasure with council. Buy some hose. Which one will we buy?
I think we get better pricing from New Mexico.
I think we should go with New Mexico. I make a motion to go with New Mexico.
Artisia fire equipment or...
New Mexico Fire.
New Mexico Fire.
New Mexico Fire.
Second? I got a motion. Who's second?
I'll second.
Second, Council Reynolds? The amount is...
$45,600.
$45,600.
For which one?
New Mexico Fire, Empire out of Alamoboro.
No. No, good. Manny?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Rick?
No.
No. I am gonna get to break this time. Holy cow! Well, I say give it to New Mexico Fire out of Alamoboro.
Let's keep the money in New Mexico. That's fine.
Okay. Next.
Well, along the same lines. I would look for hoes and I'll always try to adapt and get better self-contained breathing apparatus. And that's what this next quote is from. Two bidders put in. First one is Artisia Fire for $68,985. The second one didn't qualify because they wanted to sell us refurbished SCBA's and the Fire Marshal's office frowned on that. So you get what you paid for. This is $68,000. The total from the other company was around $16,000 right now. There's also from the grant with our match. Trying out 10 SCBA's complete with five thermal imaging masks. And it will help us see what we're trying to find in a smoke-filled environment and keep our firefighters safe as they're walking toward the flames. And we just put water on it, which is what we're supposed to do. And make sure I plan to do the same thing and get some more SCBA. Because the technology is...
Is this competitive?
Tennis. The technology's always changing. And we need to keep up with what's happening with those pieces of equipment, which are crucial for beginning of the fire and even an overhaul.
Questions?
Yeah, are there any other companies that import us or is this...
Not in New Mexico. Artisia was 001 and this other company was from, I don't know where they were from. But I saw the total bid, $16,000. I didn't even give them a second thought because you get what you pay for. $16,000, $68,000.
Yeah, we ain't gonna put anybody's life in danger over these...
And I would see them in other environments that just need air for a short amount of time, but not a fire environment, no.
Yeah, apples for apples.
Oh, that was apples, not even the cum plots.
Any other questions? Pleasure for the council.
I make a motion to approve the purchase of 10 self-contained breathing apparatuses for $68,000, mining pot.
Second? Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Vasquez? Council De Cero?
Yes.
Council Paliya?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Chief? Other chief, the other chief.
Mr. Mayor, council, city manager, thank you for having me tonight. Real quick, it's just, I'm here to... I need to buy a unit, a police unit. I have capital holiday money and we're gonna... I'm asking that we go with this Dodge Durango. The Torres, the Ford Torres and the Explorers run the same chassis and they're the twin-turbo. I was thinking that they'd be good units. Back at Sibula County, when I worked there, we have Dodge trucks. And in the county, of course, we got a lot more miles on our trucks. And they actually did very well, 180,000 miles. I mean, some of them would be, you work on them, whatever. They'd be high mileage. But it was a different kind of mileage. Here in the city, it's stop and go, stop and go. So a 60,000, 70,000 mile unit is pretty high mileage for it. But what I found, what we've been finding since I started here is that these twin-turbo cars are just giving us major problems.
Because of the stop and go, stop and go.
And that's what we're trying to figure out. We've had one of the Explorers in quarterly four for motor and several times now for fuel pumps. I mean, it's been, in the last eight months that I've been here, it's been in the shop longer, way longer than it's been on the streets. And so we have Torres, there are braking engine mounts and just different things like that. So I'm asking for the Durango and it's a little more expensive than the Ford's. But I'm hoping that with an eight-cylinder engine, we're not dealing with turbos, it's just gonna be an eight-cylinder truck. I've changed some of the ways that we're doing calls, I mean, what do I mean by that? Taking off from a start, they're not just pedal to the metal and... So they're being a little more conscientious about the way they're doing things. They're turning off their units when they're at PD or they're at someplace, unless it's an active call, they leave the cars on always. But so, it seems to me that the Dodge Durango might be the way to go. And then another thing we're trying to do is, or I'm wanting to do is kind of split our fleet between cars and SUVs. In the winter time, when we have a big snowstorm, these two-wheel-drive cars have a really hard time getting up onto the Loma and stuff. So we need to have, round it out with SUVs.
Questions? Danny?
I know that the turbos overheat real quick. And can you leave them running?
And you're the pro, because I turn the key, goes on, I'm like, I'm happy.
Well, no, the turbos do get hot and they have exit.
Yeah, Lieutenant David Chavis, he owns cars too, so he was explaining it to me, because what we have with my car when I first got here, actually the one that I'm saying has been before, but the turbo was actually warped because of the heat. And so, yeah.
Those things either run real good.
Right.
When they're cold, or if you park and run it.
Yeah.
They'll bog on you.
So that's, so I'm thinking in the next couple of years, what I'd like to do is start going towards an eight-cylinder car, which we actually have the Chargers. And they're working, we do have issues, some issues are not, it doesn't seem as many as we have with the Ford cars and Explorer.
He's saying that the turbos, if you leave the engine on, it's gonna overheat?
Yeah.
Rick, you ready?
No.
I know when we were running convicts in the prison, those Dodge vans outran anything we had, outlasted them, outfanged them. I mean, we would get three, three-hundred-and-fifty thousand miles out of Dodges, where the Fords and the Chevys could go a hundred, a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand.
Well, a lot of our breakages are forty thousand miles and that's.
Oh, that's good.
You know, when you, you know, you want to try to replace a fleet, you know, at eighty, ninety thousand miles, especially to pursue vehicles, but when you're having major issues at forty, that's not good.
Anything else? It's a pleasure with council. I make a motion to approve the Durango. Second? The second? Councilor else? Councilor Vasquez? Councilor De Siro? Councilor Paliya?
Yes.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Forrest Green? Arthur, you taking the next two?
Yes, next three, I believe.
Next three? See, is that normal slide, is that what you're doing?
That's right.
Normal slide off the...
That's right.
I have to have a talk with that guy.
That's right.
Welcome back.
Good evening, Mayor.
Name, all I can stuff for the record.
Mitch Hogset from Forrest Green Associates, and good evening, everyone. So tonight, I'm just gonna give you a quick update on the wastewater treatment plant and ask for some additional funds moving forward, and I want to talk about that. So an update on the wastewater treatment plant, it's up, it's been online since October. It's meeting all the permit, BOD, TSS and TN, total nitrogen. Jacobs, they presented the award to the city council, they've done an excellent job. I've been very impressed with Gene and Joe and Chris. They're gonna make a great team moving forward. So we finished up the new headworks. What we've got?
It's on.
It's on. So this is the old, just to show you what we did, we filled in the old channels with concrete, this was kind of stinking up the existing lab area. We built a new building, so that will be the new headworks, right there, just a quick update, that's up online. The lagoons are drying out right now, so you can see the cell six is almost dry. This one, we're gonna try to land apply, here's cell one, this one's got lots of plastics, it still needs a lot of draining to do. Throughout winter, we expect water to more or less accumulate, just because there's not much evaporation. Okay, on to the main thing of coming here and presenting to you, I'm asking for an amendment to the CW RSF zero-seven-seven, that's the contract name. And we've got four things under there, we've got tasks A, these are involved with construction of the wastewater treatment plant. There's tasks B, and these are involved with, A, the discharge permit and the lining or not lining of the golf course ponds. And item C, which is kind of, is, there's gonna be additional things that NMEB asked for, and this is to kind of address additional things or out of the scope that we couldn't foresee today. And item D, kind of silly, but we owe you guys ten dollars for me using the incorrect tax rate in the last bill.
Ten dollars.
Ten dollars, really was ten dollars. Okay, this is very hard to see, sorry, guys, for the audience, but if you can go to your flow diagram, there's one to talk about what these tasks are. So A one, land application, and A two, final grading. These are a direct result of the city, the Forrest Green, the contractor going with this dry-in-place lagoon sludge. So there's a savings of four-hundred-and-thirteen thousand dollars by letting this stuff sit there, you know, for months on end to dry out versus pumping it and working with it. So this put back Forrest Green's schedule considerably. So the first couple items we're asking for are extensions on the schedule.
Let's start right there.
Yes, sir.
Start right there. I've been speaking to my boss out at the mine. They're talking about paying us for this crap. Where are we at? Okay, so literally, they're talking about paying us for our crap, guys, I'm all about that, okay?
Yes, sir. We are too. Yes, sir.
Okay. We're supposed to be pouring some concrete pads out there to dry it on. There's some things that are happening out there that you guys might want to get ahold of Bruce very soon, like tomorrow, and see where they're at or what they're doing.
I left a message and no one has returned my phone.
Okay, then I will give him a call tomorrow and see where we're at.
Please do, give myself a call.
Because I'm all about this, guys.
We have the T-clips, so I believe we're talking about two different things, correct me, Mitch? So we have fresh stuff that's coming out of the new plant. This is the old stuff.
The old stuff is what they want out there for the uranium coverup and all that good stuff, is that what they're saying? They want the new, they want everything.
They want everything. They want everything. They want aeromods or the new stuff.
Yep.
We are not permitted to give the old stuff to the mines, so that would be a whole other change. So I have permitted you guys.
That's something that we need to start looking at right now, then, is to get the permit, to give it to the mine. Because, yes, because, guys, this is insane, if they're gonna pay us for our effluent, our crap that's coming out of our wastewater treatment plant, we're absolutely idiotic not taking that place. And it's something to do with deflecting the radiation or something out there, guys, so.
They put it on top of the land, of the cover.
Keeps everything down, it keeps the foundation of gamma rays and all that stuff down, so they're all about it.
We've done all our homework and our T-clip path has passed, and so our sludge is good to take. And so, yeah, we just, we have all that people.
Thank you, continue.
They have to get permits as well, we're not exactly.
Yes, they do. Yes, they do. Okay, that'll work.
Okay, so.
Let's just ship that stuff through.
Land applying the lagoon bio solids might save fifteen to twenty grand for the city, that would be cells three and six, cells one and two seem to be heavily contaminated with plastic material. Okay, so that's the construction services. For the B tasks, it gets a little confusing over here, I'll just really quickly. So B one and B two are the new permit dated December thirty-first, twenty eighteen, specifically Asperdies. I'll be working with the golf course, Jacobs and the city to put together, they're a good facility layout. Facility layout includes the golf course, all water infrastructure, water meters, where are they, reservoir pressure zones, where are they, et cetera, et cetera. This is pretty basic, nothing's gonna change. B two, the effluent reuse plan, by March thirty-first, the next month, NMEB wants a reuse plan of how we're managing these golf course ponds. And this is completely contingent on whether we are lining the ponds or not. So there is a rush to get some things done in the next couple of months, they're all related. So if we do not line the ponds, which is what, so why would we not line the ponds? It's really expensive, NMEB's not gonna go for that. Your plant is producing effluent.
We've been through the unlined ponds, we know what they create, we know the lawsuits they create. For me, guys, that's not an option. Okay, we need to line them ponds, stop them ponds from leaking and flooding everybody out. And it'll stop the Akamas, it'll stop everything, we gotta be better neighbors than we've been in the past, period. And what we were doing out there, because we did the same thing at the mine, and then they lined every pond to contain the contamination. And that's exactly what we need to do in the city grants in order to be good neighbors to our people outside.
Okay, I'm gonna throw.
Throw it out there, Rick.
Throw it out there. So the contamination used to be total nitrogen, nitrates, you guys are now meeting groundwater recharge. So you're actually gonna make the water cleaner.
For how long?
Well, we can land apply as long as we're meeting, and we should, for twenty, thirty years, right?
Yes, yes.
Silly to line them ponds because they leak.
Well, that could be something.
That's a nine-billion-dollar project.
And I understand that.
Well, that's something that I would rather you guys not line the ponds and then line whatever you want based on your own schedule and not NMEB telling you to line them. So if there is ponds.
How many ponds are we looking at, using?
You know, it completely depends, if you don't mind them.
If you remember, if you remember, when we started this process, I was all about eliminating some of them ponds, a bunch of them.
Yep.
And I got pushback from you guys about it.
Yep, it just depends, if they're all being lined, okay, let's put this in perspective, if they're all lined.
Because we only need one pond.
No.
Okay, so we need five.
Nine minimum, we have one-point-one MGD, if you go to one-point-five MGD, what the facility is designed to handle, you do not have enough turf out there to water, you'll drown it.
Okay, that explains.
There's, there is.
I'm gonna take backs.
Okay. So that's task B one and B two. B three is modifying the PER, the EID to whatever goal, you know, we choose to. Right now, I am under the impression, well, I'm under depression, I can move forward with sending out the NEPA letters to not line the ponds, dredge six ponds that have organically contaminated sediments, and continue groundwater monitoring.
And then reline them with clay?
So the bottoms appear to be, the clay liners appear to be totally fine, it's the sides where things are leaking. So this will be, once you guys are allowed to make your own decisions, you know.
Okay. It's our money.
It's your money.
It's a lot of it.
It is a lot of it, all right.
It's a lot of it.
That's, that's that, I kind of went through all these, but why are we doing this? Task A is all due to dry-in-place, there's up to four-hundred-and-thirteen K plus savings. Task B has to do with permitting and whether we line or not line the ponds. Task C is additional services to go on with the unknowns, so I just want to throw out there here. Task C, even though there's a line item, that will require Lara's and everyone's permission before we touch this. This is just for the unknowns, I already know it's gonna happen in the next month and a half to get this done. Thank you, folks.
Questions? Sidney?
Not at this time.
Manny?
No.
Rick?
As far as the testing that's going on with the groundwater now, so we're in compliance? Whatever is.
The, okay, so groundwater, not in compliance. Effluent coming out of the wastewater treatment plant?
Yes.
In compliance, so one would assume if there is water going into groundwater and you're meeting in compliance now, it's just gonna dilute the contamination.
Have we tested for that?
That's correct, yes.
And this is something that's gonna take five years potentially before we even.
It's the same thing they're doing out here at Home State, guys, they're putting clean water in through a dirty filter and trying to flush it out to make the water to where it meets federal standards by having enough fresh, clean water pumped into it and the old nasty crap brought out. I mean, it's the same thing, it's the same philosophy.
So to tell you how close we are, we just tested this last quarter, our groundwater, we're one part per million away from being in compliance with the groundwater standards. So we're very close.
Close. I would say you're down the road.
Rick?
So with that, I'm asking on behalf of Don and Forrest Green and myself to extend Forrest Green's contract for engineer services and also the amount for two-hundred-and-eighteen thousand five hundred and ninety dollars, including tax.
And I believe this is coming out of the oh-seven-seven draft?
Yes.
Or loan?
Everything's oh-seven-seven, oh-two-nine is now expired.
Any other questions? Pleasure with council.
Is this amount, has it been increased since our last?
This is two-hundred-and-eighteen thousand dollars on top of everything else that we've already paid.
That's correct. Now, and there is one thing I'd like to point out, the four-hundred-thousand dollars that we're saving, it's not a pure savings. Some of that was instruction service, now we're shifting some of that to engineering oversight for the savings. And so it's not pure savings, unfortunately, but there is still some to be seen.
Anything else? Pleasure with council.
I move to approve the pond lining project for two-hundred-and-eighteen thousand five ninety?
Second?
Queen Jackson?
Queen Jackson. Second? Sidney?
Yes.
Danny? Yes. Fred?
Yes.
Max?
Very good, thank you, council. All right, moving on to the next item, we are looking at... Hang on, lost my paperwork here.
And both of these are phase four?
That's correct. Oh, I don't need that, thank you. Okay, the next.
Right on, brother.
Is L-six-zero-zero-one-zero-seven, so this is second phase, the second street. We will probably be able to disperse the funds before June thirtieth, but it's probably not worth that risk. And so we're asking for an additional twelve months to extend the contract, so that way we make sure and get all the funds that the state is giving us.
But this is starting now, May, right?
That's correct. Everything's on schedule.
Everything's on schedule.
But if there's one hiccup on the state side, then we lose out on all the money.
So this is second street where they're all be doing in front of the high school, and so it's planned for summer when school's out?
Exactly.
And it's the rest of Second Street?
That's correct, that'll finish off Second Street. Yes, sir.
Questions? Sidney?
I have a question, and I think it's regarding First and Second Street. When we were taught, when we were presented about Second Street, there were, the presenter talked about ponds. I specifically asked, are we going to have some more mosquito breeding grounds? I was told no, there weren't going to be new mosquito breeding grounds. Apparently, these, I was under the impression at that time that the pond, where else would they be but underground? And when I went to the meeting on First and Second Street at the library, I was told something totally different, that they were going to be above-ground ponds, so which is it?
So there was two concerns, Mayor also had a concern. Go ahead.
Am I missing?
Mine were the dry wells, there's a dry well right over there by yours and Rick's house, it's not a dry well no more. The minute it rains, it fills up, it's ruined the whole road in front of the little dry well there by that white house on... And that's what they're talking about doing all the way down First Street too, and I said, that is never gonna happen, guys, it lasts for two years.
I have this issue with, we're gonna have a bunch of water, where's this water going?
Very good, so.
Very good.
Thank you, Don and I, we met with Wilson and Company, and we have requested a major redesign.
Yes.
And so the design will now feed into a lift station, which will have a force main, which will take it back to Washington as the discharge point. So right now, it'll be an undersized lift station that will pump continuously until it's dry.
So it puts it in the canal there?
That's correct. Well, Washington, and then Washington goes to the right, exactly. And so this will not handle a hundred-year flood, but there will be plans for future development for an additional, you know, five-hundred thousand to seven-hundred thousand for a super-large lift station that will handle a hundred-year flood. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
We get rid of the pond, everything goes into pipes and lift stations, that's the answer, and no more dry wells. Just to be clear, that's on First Street, we're talking about Second Street. But on Second Street, there is a major redesign, which you all voted on, I want to say in December, for all of the drainage in the high school area.
And that's going over there, whatever direction, that's going over there.
That's correct, right. So we're, on both of these next, we're asking for time?
On nine-ten?
That's correct.
One is from Washington Street to Roosevelt, and the other one's to New Washington to Adams.
So there's two control numbers.
Right, from the same street, but different.
That's correct.
Different parts of funding?
Different parts.
That's right.
But we need to do the same thing because they're both in the same timeline.
Yes, I was reading in Washington, Roosevelt, and Washington.
Yeah.
And currently, there's no reason to expect anything less than meeting our deadlines, so... But the state is really, they're underfunded, and so a lot of times, we can send a document and they could take three weeks, six weeks to get it back, we just... It's not worth that risk, I think.
Sorry about that, that was the sheriff, guys, I take calls from the sheriff or the chief of police, okay, so apologize. And this is just extension?
Yes, sir.
Extension request? What's the pleasure of the council? Got to do it one at a time, though, guys. So what do we get out of the above-ground ponds, there's not gonna be no above-ground ponds.
That's correct.
We're gonna have a lift station, we're gonna pump it underground into the Rio and out of town, right?
That's right.
Okay, yes, that was my same concern, because we're gonna, we're gonna get that dry well in front of your place taken care of too. Because that's insane, it lasted like two and a half, it might have lasted three years, you guys live there, you know they're ivy. But I can't remember when we put it in, I know that it didn't last as long as they said it would, okay? At first, it worked real well, about the first three rainstorms, and then it started backing up and it still went down with everything that washes in it.
We don't have the soil for that.
Exactly, it won't work, okay? So number nine, Resolution eighteen-sixteen-twenty-four, pleasure with council. Pleasure to counsel.
Hello, I move we approve resolution eighteen dash sixteen twenty-four. Second Street, Phase Four.
Second.
Second.
Anything else?
Yes.
Yes.
Manny, Rick?
Yes.
Fred? Okay, second one. Resolution eighteen sixteen twenty-five, which is basically the same thing, just a different line of money. I'm gonna entertain a motion.
Yeah, I move to approve the extension for resolution eighteen sixteen twenty-five. Uh, Second Street, Phase Four.
Second.
Second. Yes.
Sidney, Manny?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council.
Okay, the discussion of use of city bags, um, plastic bags, do we need to go over that again? Since, go ahead, Laura.
We have, um, one of our staff call, uh, two of our largest grocery stores, Vince's and Walmart, just to get a feel if they would be supportive of, uh, uh, ordinance on plastic bags, and they were. They thought it would be great. And then, um, we, we had a draft ordinance, and I apologize, I thought it was gonna be in your packets, but I'll email it to you so you can start looking at it. It's very simple. And it allows for a six-month timeframe to prepare everybody, so that we just don't spring this on people. But we wanted to know if we have your support first, and you could talk with your colleagues and just kinda get a feel if it's something the community would support.
Just plastic bags?
Yes.
Is it, is it a ban or is it a charge?
It's a ban.
It's a ban.
It's a ban. We'll take out all the plastic bags within city limit, minus the restaurants.
I believe it said restaurants could continue, but...
Yeah, but most of the restaurants don't use plastic bags anymore. Okay? Um, they use paper bags. They put all your sandwiches in a paper bag and send it out the door. Why? What are you thinking about taxing for plastic bags, or?
It's a missed opportunity to generate the... Okay.
I got a question. What moved on to this in Grants? What about Milan?
Uh, we'll press, well, I got a meeting with the mayor and the manager tomorrow at ten AM in the morning here, and we can press them then when we're done with discussing. Yeah, no, we got a, we got a meeting here, and I'm sure John Brooks will come on board with it. And that's basically really the only store that they have over there that does it.
Dollar Stores and...
Yeah, the Dollar Stores. We gotta get the Dollar Stores, definitely. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just, uh, wanted to let you know that we did approach the village and also the county, and they were both, um, uh, in favor of the plastic bag ordinance, but they really thought the city should take the lead.
Well, we got the lead now, bro.
Right. But so when, when you go there, I think they were very supportive. So I don't know how much we'll have to press.
Because we're taking the lead on this. We're gonna run with this and, and see what we can do with this, guys. And eventually, if, if we can ever get our economy back to where we're not the poorest state in the nation or second poorest, we can look at blue bins in front of every house. Not at sixteen dollars a head, not right now. That's just never gonna happen, guys. We got too many people on social security, fixed incomes in this town, that, that would just kill them. It would stop their medications. They'd be paying for a blue bin that they don't even need. And they're waiting at sixteen, eighteen bucks for what they do need. Okay? Any other discussion on that one? It's coming, okay? Just so everybody knows, it's coming. Um, on this one here, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session. Hopefully it won't take very long. And we're going to the closed session pursuant to section ten fifteen dash one, NMSA, it's nineteen seventy-eight, regarding actions related to council members. Let's go. Or no, you know what? I gotta entertain a motion. Give me a motion, Laura. Jay, shut up. Second.
Second.
All, Sidney? Yes? Manny? Rick?
Yes.
Fred, yes. Closed session. We'll be back to the... Shut up, dog. Should I apologize?
Is it live?
It hurt, did you say?
It's a show.
Here's my tip. Just discussion, okay? Uh, on that note, comments, Laura? You got anything?
I don't.
Sidney, comments, Kelly?
I do. Well, now that there's none here.
There's still a couple. The, the board is here.
Let's not forget the trees on Santa Fe. Next month it's gonna be spring, and they might have those little buds.
So I have a question on that.
I don't know what the answer.
Yeah, I, we did trim the sides. I thought initially we said we weren't gonna trim the tops. So there's three trees right there. I was looking at them this week. If we trim one, we're gonna have to trim all of them. So if we cut the tops...
I don't know what's gonna happen.
Because they'll expand out.
I, I changed that down.
The trees grow to the top.
So...
And you know that when you tie a piece of wildfire on it, the tree grows from the top.
So if we do one, we would have to do all three, because when I, I was looking, there's three of them, and one's taller than one closest, but...
Yeah.
You know?
You should trim it like this, I mean...
Well, and that's the thing, I think it'll hurt it.
It'll hurt it.
See, do you have someone, because, you know, right now, when they, when spring comes and the leaves come, you know, they're gonna be blocking the sign again.
Yes, they are.
And I don't know, I can't figure out how long before they get over the sign.
Over the sign.
Yeah, so I don't know.
That'll be a cou- I think that'd be a couple of years, but right now, if you trim the sides, actually it encourages trees to grow up.
So they didn't grow bush out of it.
Yeah, you're gonna cut the bottom.
So I still need my trim, cut, or trimmed.
Okay. The sides?
Yep. I've asked you, and I've asked Quinn, which...
Anything else? Yeah, you ain't sure trimmed yet.
Okay, the second one is lining. I'm putting it officially that I'm requesting, this is for the, um, the next, you know, June...
Lisa?
The new bunch of money that we get to our...
Budget.
The budget.
July.
Mm-hmm. It's south of Roosevelt to Gunnison, and it's east of Elm to Leon. It's basically right off of...
Where's Mark Tishy at?
He's, he's gone.
That's all it is.
There's none. There isn't any lighting. It's that, it's trailer area.
The trailer area?
The trailer area with no lighting.
Is that Mark's street?
Um, Marcus is first.
Sidney, no.
Marcus is a pa- more paved one. No, this is, this is north of that, north of, north of that. Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
Now, this is a, Mount, yeah, one more.
Keep going.
Mount Teener Coffee, Mount Teener Coffee is the new coffee place, okay? It's on High and Central. Excellent van ebra. But they're off, they painted, um, Mount Teener Coffee on their, what is that?
Side of the building.
Side of the building, they do stops. But there isn't, they're missing opportunity from people who don't know it's there. There, they don't have advertised, I mean, they don't have something on Santa Fe to direct the people there. And they have requested, apparently from the city, I don't know anybody where they did, but you know, why, in my opinion, why does the city have to be so rigid? When, you know, put up a, let a sandwich sign or something, I don't know about property lines or anything else. You know, there's not very good sidewalks in that area. But they need to be able to advert, we need to assist them.
You're talking about putting out one of those sandwiches?
Yeah, or something, because we need to...
Put that in the median and just pick it up every day? Why not?
The DOT does not allow signage in the median.
The DOT, there you go.
Then, then on something, what, you know?
So if they put...
Who's the DOT? Let me go, I'll talk to the DOT, but we have to do something as a community to promote new business.
Oh, yes.
Why, you know, no, people will sell their souls to some big corporation that come in.
Oh, yes.
No taxes. Oh, let me, let me pay your water for five hundred years. Let me do this, let me do that. And for a small little business, we won't do anything? That doesn't sound good to me. So who did the DOT?
So I'm, I'm not aware of them asking for any signage. It might have gone to the code enforcement, so I can find out, but...
DOT is Hainer.
Typically, they could put something, um...
Larry Hainer.
On, on Santa Fe Avenue that's not in the median, but it would have to be on a private property.
Yeah, the private property. Well, it's not, it would be habivers, and you know, they're not friends of the city.
Lakeland, Lakeland? A big empty building, Lakeland?
Yeah, but isn't, it's not Lakeland anymore.
It's closed now, but that would be a property possibly.
Somebody know.
Typically, people who allow someone that may charge a fee, um, I know the casino has a couple of billboards up, and I think they pay a fee.
Can we block where he puts one around right in front of his gun shop? Every day? Every day?
It's not in the median though, right?
No, it's not. I don't, I saw him walk in front of his gun shop.
Yeah, he puts it on the sidewalk.
Yeah, see?
So what about, what about like the Arts Council? Do you think they have a concept? I mean, it's like a block or so. I mean, it's close.
Yeah, so I'll ask what the request was, but I know it's, and I, you always have to think of this. If we let them put something in the median, who else will? And they're just worried about people leaving signs in the median and crashing, crashing. You know, but on the sides of the road, they have no authority over that.
Oh, so the DOT, that's the authority over that?
There, there's a, you know, there's a right wing. We have to get out of the right wing.
Come on, folks.
I'm with you.
You know, that's...
I'm with you. There's gotta be a way to do it.
Yeah.
When there's a will, there's a way.
I'll check on that and see, you know, who they spoke with or where they wanted it or what the issues were.
The hard way, yeah, like that, all the way.
Sidney?
What?
I, we do have a local app. I did put them on our app. I also registered them with the state for the film. And so they are listed there. A lot of people that do film tourism look to see...
Yeah, 'cause I, you know...
Who does?
I look at the signs. I don't drive with my apps.
I mean, we have, as the city, though, help other businesses by doing things like that. And that's at no cost to the business.
Yeah.
You know, I just want some, something that people can see.
Visually.
Visual aid, that's exactly what I want.
Anything else?
No, no, no.
Manny?
I just want the trees trimmed, because there, there are hit by sign on. The other thing is, um, on that road, the sewer line has collapsed.
Mark's working on that.
Which one? Here, Mark?
Yeah, he's not here right now, but I know he went and looked at it.
I was wondering, my brother.
I think we bought some kind of scope so they could get in and look at it. Yeah, so he's working on that.
But do we have the money?
I, I don't know. We'll have to see what the cost is gonna be.
So let's, let's work on that, Mark.
Okay.
Rick?
Okay, it's a new year, and I remember talking about, um, uh, Wells Park and finishing that ballpark. I know we're working on getting some funding or something from Future.
YCC?
Yeah. What's, uh, is that gonna happen this...
I haven't heard, um, usually this time of year, they'll be hearing if they got their grant. So we'll have to, they have a new director, so I'm sure...
That would've been a good question for Julie.
Yeah, I, I've not heard if they got a grant.
Future, because they're the ones that handle that grant, Rick?
Okay.
Okay.
Who was in charge in putting that grant together? Was it her?
Yeah, Future Foundation.
Oh, was it her? It was the girl before her?
Yeah, Sherry.
She'll be doing it now. My lord did it, Sherry did it. Anything else?
That's it.
Yeah, Laura, I would, you were Mark here. We have to start looking at the long-range plan, I don't know. I think a four-fire plan on Santa Fe Avenue with the Department of Transportation is falling apart, guys. Last time, I worked on, I was a strip inspector in that road right there. But, you know, digging and stuff like that, and I drive a little bit like you guys do. But we have to start looking at the long, but, you know, I don't know, I think they cut it to seven years, and then they go to five, four, three, one. But we have to start looking at that with the Department of Transportation, you guys.
Donald is working on that. Um, we have a committee that's working on all of the stuff from the MRA plan, which was the Metropolitan redevelopment plan. And it, part of that had lowering the speed limit, it had, um, getting these empty buildings filled. So we have a committee working on that, and Donald said he would take on the task to work with the DOT to start pushing that we need Santa Fe Avenue repaid.
According to Santa Fe, they got some money for roads and stuff like that, and they will give us something. And he's, yeah, we did it one summer.
Yeah.
You know, here's what I got. You don't need to run into this, though. You look at what's going on at the state. They say they got money for roads, but they're raising taxes, guys. They got a billion-dollar surplus, and they're raising taxes on everything. Gas, ammunition, food, you name it, with a billion-dollar surplus. Explain that one to me, guys. I don't get it, okay? They're trying to pass laws to take away your Second Amendment. They're trying to pass laws that makes late-term abortion legal up to the day they're delivering the child. Okay? And they're trying to turn us into a sanctuary state. And I'm telling you right now, if they pass sanctuary laws, turning us in, telling us that we cannot cooperate with ICE or Border Patrol or anything like that, the city of Grants and Sebola County Sheriff, Tony Mace, we will be the first ones to push back against that. Just so you know. Okay? Sanctuary laws are not good. All they do is create more crime. And all you gotta do is ask the sheriffs of every single county, every single town. Look at Albuquerque. Sanctuary city, look at it. No, guys, okay? And that's what they're doing in Santa Fe. And it makes no sense to be trying to raise taxes when you have a billion-dollar surplus. Someone explain it to me, because I've been asking the guys in Santa Fe, and they're just, oh, uh, 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 uh. And we're the ones that sent them there. Okay? The only one that has a clue up there anymore is Clemente. He's the only one that's pushing back on anything. We got a bill that they came and presented to me and Kate Fletcher, Medicare for All. It was a number study, is what she told me, the lady that presented it to us, okay? So I came back, I read the bill, because they didn't have the bill for us, Senate Bill two seventy-nine. I read the bill. Well, I'm a pretty conservative guy, so I figured I'll let Laura read it, I'll let my chiefs read it, and they all came back with the exact same thing that I was saying. It's Obamacare on steroids. We already dealt with Obamacare, okay? And that's what that law is. They would be able to tell the city of Grants, this is your share of the healthcare for the state. Now make your budget elsewhere from that missing that money. Okay? And they want to include illegal aliens in it, too. And all that's gonna do is track more and more and more. They'll come flocking here like mad for free healthcare. And nothing's free. That's the killer.
We all pay for it.
And nothing's free. And here, and like I said, why are they raising taxes when they have a billion, a billion-dollar surplus, guys? Ten cent gas tax, bring back the food tax, tax your ammunition, tax this, tax that, tax everything. So just so you know, when the time comes, if they do that, if those laws pass, I will be the first one to push back. Me and Tony Mace, Tony's already got it, the attorneys of the county, looking into it. Because they cannot dictate to us to break federal law. And that's the bottom line. Yes, Barbara?
Well, I have been following some of this, and what I see is that they're wanting to spend money from the, from the, uh...
Permanent fund.
Permanent fund.
And raise taxes.
Right. And so that's where, why they're doing this, so that they can spend...
Does it make sense to you?
No.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much.
No.
Because it makes no sense to anybody that I talk to, but yet up there in Santa Fe, they're all about...
Well, you know, I'm all for education, have been forever. But why are we, we have an education fund that's going to, I forget how many millions of dollars, from infancy, infancy, when a child can't even begin to read yet till three years of age?
I have a teacher. There's a teacher right there. There's a teacher right here. I guarantee you, the problem with the school system and who's been in charge of it for the last eighty years? The unions that have been there. There's your problem.
Well, that's part, that makes...
There's your problem. I witnessed, I worked for the schools for six years. I witnessed it with my own eyeballs.
Okay, that's only part of it. Remember that... Okay, that's only part of it. Remember the...
Oh, it's a big part of it.
Hold on. The schools get their money from the federal government. The federal government dictates to the state, the state dictates to the local schools. And that's where the problem is. The federal government has got their thumb in the pot, and they are controlling our education.
The problem is big government, whether it's state, federal, or anywhere else. All government needs to be cut down to size. Okay?
I've said my piece.
Period. Okay, on that note, entertain the most closest meeting down.
I shall move.
Second.
Second.
All the favors say aye. Let's go home. Have a good night.